Call to order, the meeting of the Aridale County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, May 17th, 2016. At this time, I'd like everyone to please bow your head for a moment of silent prayer reflection. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove the personnel item off of the closed session agenda, and I would like to add an economic development item under closed session, and that's general statute reference 143-31811 subsection A4.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended by Mr. Smith?
All for that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. We have no special recognitions or awards this evening. We do have one appointment before the Board, a public safety facility presentation, Mr. David Schlevey. And crew.
Chairman Mallory and Board, thanks for having us. This is an opportunity that we have to explain to or to describe our new public safety facility located on Bristol Drive, proposed to be completed in 2000, early 2018. But several years ago, I'd say about two years ago, this thing kind of got started with, on the EMS side, looking at space needs and bringing all of our public safety departments, as we, as you see here, under one roof. Currently, they, we have one department in a 1970's bunker. We've got one department in a very old car dealership, and one department probably in a 1940's long hospital morgue. So we've got them spread out. But because they're spread out, their inter, their interdependency on each other, their interoperability with each other has not grown to the level that we would, we would hope. As our county grows and the, and the demands of our citizens grow, these departments need to work more closely together, which also drives efficiency and sharing of resources. So what we have here tonight, we've got the department heads who will briefly describe what each of their departments do, but the folks that will be in that facility, this is kind of the organizational chart as we stand now. We have the ECOM, or the emergency communication piece, 911, and their support staff, supervisors, and the folks that work 12-hour shifts around the clock, 365 days a year, to take your 911 calls. That's what they do. And that is a huge operation, and they're the ones currently located in the 1970's bunker, back when there was one operator and one radio, and that was about it. So it's, it's moved a long way, and our county growing demand for more calls has necessitated the expansion of this. The second piece, which looks kind of big, and it does, and it is, because when you see the, the floor plan of the building, is our emergency medical service. We call it EMS. And under that is a, is a whole group of ambulances, for those of you who are not familiar with EMS. And some of them are scattered out all over the county, and then some of them are located locally. And there is a huge training staff and administrative staff that, that keeps that department running smoothly. And then the third piece, it, the third piece, yeah, I'll get it there. There we go, third piece is our fire services and emergency management. And our directors are here to explain what they do, but that group is the one, if you would need a fire marshal, or the large-scale event would happen where we need emergency operations throughout the county, and they are a preparedness group, and they, and they keep our county prepared. There's a, and there's a staff of administration, emergency management coordinator, fire marshal, and those folks there. All of these folks probably make up close to maybe 150 people. Not all of them will be there at one time, some will be scattered out into county, but those are the organizations that will house this new 37,500 square foot facility. Again, we brought a group to kind of explain a little bit about the building first, and then what each department does, and then we'll open it up for questions after that. Thank you.
I'm David Montgomery, the county architect, and about a year and a half ago, the county contracted the, contracted an outside consultant firm to do a space needs study, and we used this study, and then we consulted with each of the four groups, or the three groups that David talked about, and took what they had. We condensed some of the spaces, or made them into, we had shared common spaces that we used to make the building more efficient, and we got the footprint down from what had been in the study to what you see here. Another thing that we looked at was expansion and having, having it so each of the different parts could expand even independently of each other. And then throughout this whole process, we have gone into a lengthy, a lengthy design build selection process where we interviewed firms for architects, engineers, and contractors as a team, and we're currently in negotiations with that on one of those firms. What they will do is take what we've done here and refine it and further develop it. They'll be meeting with our different user groups again, and probably tweaking some things to get it, to improve on it some more even. We currently have contracted a emergency communication consultant who is working with us now, particularly with the ECOM part of this. Then on the site, you see Bristol Drive here, to the, to the left in this direction is the present ACT Center and Animal Services Site. The, this parameter here is the parcel that the new public safety building will be on. One of the things that we're considering with this site is making a connector between it and the other campus, and another thing that, to be considered would be utilizing the site so that you can allow for flexibility for future developments, you know, at some point. And again, back to the expansion point, the building needs to be placed so that the site can accept expansion from the building for those different user groups that we talked about. And the last is just kind of an aerial view of the facility as it's drawn now. It, it shows the massing, how you've got where the bays are, or higher roofed areas than the remainder of the building. It would be a one-story building, and you can kind of get a sense for the scale with that as well.
Could you go back to the site plan? I'm curious, you know, you have the EMS bays there on the left. In terms of ingress and egress, you have one single point for both, located at the other end of the building. Is it feasible to have a direct access for egress only, right out of the bays to Bristol Drive, so that you don't have to?
There.
Right. Instead of, you know, potentially meeting oncoming traffic coming into the complex?
Yes, I think that, that would be a good idea, and some of our initial discussions with the design build team, that came up, and that's what was suggested as well.
That's all I have.
Good evening. My name is Blair Ritchie. I am the Aridale County EMS Director. Aridale County EMS is made up of two divisions. The EMS 911 side responds to the 911 emergency calls. The EMS Specialty Services Division responds to our non-emergency requests. Our side of the public safety complex would house multiple 911 emergency ambulances, the entire Specialty Services Division side, as well as the EMS management team. Due to population growth and expansion of our services, this building will provide necessary space for our current and anticipated future needs. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Kent Green, Director of Fire Services and Emergency Management. Unlike Blair's brief description, David told me I only had an hour and a half to talk about fire services. Our division, as David alluded to earlier, consists of the fire marshal's office, public safety educator, emergency management coordinator, and then serving as well as the coordinator of the 19 volunteer fire departments that serve Aridale County. A big part of that would be in time of man-made or natural disaster, where the EOC, or Emergency Operations Center, would come into play and be functional. On a day-to-day basis, fire marshal and emergency management have a pretty good division of labor and have their specific tasks assigned, but during that time of disaster, they would all come together and work in concert, as well as communicating and working with the Communication Center, EMS, and all of the other public safety agencies in Aridale County. So a single facility like this will be very advantageous to the county in the long run. Thank you.
Good evening. I appreciate you all having us here to explain a little bit. My name is Candy Strzansky. I'm the 911 Director for Aridale County. What we're going to have in this facility is the operations center itself. It will have 16 to 18 work stations that will encompass the dispatch screens and the telephone screens that are necessary for the communications center. We will have administrative offices, supervisor offices, director, assistant director, and training staff offices surrounding that. A data center for the technology that will be updated, and we're looking forward to, to the room for growth that we'll have here. The 911 center answers 911 and non-emergency calls for the citizens of Aridale County. Last year, we handled over 300,000 phone calls. We have seen a steady increase each year of the number of dispatched incidents. In the last two years, that increase has been 33%. So this expansion, we're hoping will allow for eventually more staff and more upstate equipment for us. We're really looking forward to this. Thank you.
And that concludes what we had for you tonight. I, I hope it met, met your expectations, but now is your time. We, we brought the experts, so for your questions or comments to them.
Are there questions or comments from the Commissioners?
I have, I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I'm looking at this page, if I can. David, walk, walk me from one end of that thing to the other. How many conference rooms do you have in there? One thing that I've always witnessed in government buildings is, first thing that gets pinched is a conference room, because they think it's not going to be used, and then next thing you know, you gotta, you have to have a coordinated meeting with somebody from the different department heads, and everybody's hoping nobody ate, you know, pepperoni pizza for lunch.
Well, I'm gonna back it up to this one. What David Montgomery and the staff did is, after the, the big picture was drawn, they went back and they looked for shared spaces, things that they could share, and conference room was, was one of those. Now, exactly how many, I'm gonna say, I'm looking at six, but there's one thing to note that this one right here, the EOC, is about 2,000 square feet. It's gonna have dividers in it.
Okay.
So it's gonna be a multipurpose room. It can be divided into four subrooms, and unless we have a large-scale event, I would, I would imagine those dividers would stay up, and that, and that can be used for training. I think community medicine is another function that we're looking at, to training the public, but, but around that room, there are two more, and maybe two or three others in there. But again, there's one thing to remember, all this is conceptual, this was the best that we did, and we're pretty comfortable that this is going to be the layout. There, there will be some tweaking of this design as we move forward, but still staying within our 37,500 foot footprint.
Going out there is a future expansion. You got one on this end.
Yep. Ambulance bays, this is a multi-function area of, of service, equipment, washing-type stuff for ambulances, and, and the initial design had this piece at the end, but as we expand, and remember, your, your expansion probably will be more on the SSD side as that business grows. We really want to get our ambulances out into the community where they need to be for quick response. So this expansion piece, this is just a footprint that will be saved, reserved for future expansion if more truck bays are needed. These are double truck bays, which means you have enough right now for 14, and with most of our trucks now here at Statesville are outside. Expansion here, this is just another footprint that could be reserved for EMS training, more room for conference rooms, paramedic, not para, uh, community medicine, or, or, or support This is probably the first area to, to get expanded as the state moves more into consolidated communication centers. This footprint right here will be reserved for more telecommunication consoles or desk computer systems. And lastly, the EOC was, as we met with our architects, they mentioned putting the EOC area on the outside wall for future expansion. Right now, it's locked in by rooms, so if we did want to do, if we did, if we needed to move or add on to the EOC area, emergency management, for whatever reason in the future, then that, then having that on the outside wall would be better. But also keep in mind, we, we were charged with a 50 to 60-year plan, so, so these, so these areas are reserved, but they're not shelled in at this time.
So really, none of those are load-bearing walls?
Yes. Our architects will design it for, for expansion and easily add it on to, as far as systems also, whether it's computer or HVAC, mechanical.
Mr. Chairman, I have one, a couple of quick questions. Public access, you're gonna have one point of ingress egress for the general public to come and do business with this facility, provided they need to talk to somebody or get a copy of something. Will that, will that have like a common receptionist?
Yes.
Or in there, where you direct the people from that?
It'll be right in here. There's a common entry area with a receptionist who will, who will also be support admin, support for one of these groups.
Second question, this is not an emergency shelter in the time of a natural disaster. None of this building is designated for that, is, am I correct on that?
That is correct.
Because this is gonna, facility's gonna have all the bubble gum it can chew if that happens.
Uh, they'll be busy. The emergency shelters are out into the communities. Right now, our shelter is at South Aridale, South Aridale High School.
I just didn't want to put out the persona that we're creating something that, because this has got a specific purpose.
Correct.
Any further comments? I just want to thank you, David, for the effort that you've played, put in this, and, as well as David Montgomery, in terms of conceptualizing, and first off, looking at the issue of, you know, basically form should follow function. You know, we were looking at, well, what if we had to do a separate EMS location? They badly needed new digs. Same thing for the emergency communications, just running out of space. And then you have fire marshal that was just off in a completely separate building, nice location, but not connected to the others. So this was an opportunity to, by close proximity, encourage operational coordination between all three entities, which are inexorably bound together in the services that you provide. So I think as you started this process, you're the only two left standing, that, that we now have three new department heads in a reorganized, reorganized group, and do all three of you feel that you, you've had the opportunity to be able to evaluate the proposed design and make tweaks, and, and that it meets your needs going forward as you look over the next two or three hills, understanding that, you know, we have a changing population, there's change in technology, there's change in the number of people available to perform functions on a, in our volunteer base, so you all have a warm and fuzzy about all that. Okay, so we got the drinking bird, everybody good to go?
We are still in the tweaking process.
Okay.
Just currently got one more question.
Yeah.
How about safety wise, Mr. Schlevey, you have that taken care of for security?
Security? Yes, our architect that we're working with now is well-versed, and in these types of facilities, there are state and federal standards that we, that we have to comply with, that, that, that provides setback from certain areas. You can't park but so close to the building, there's barriers up, there's certain types of glass, there's certain types of building construction that, that hardens the building against something happening. But there'll also internally and externally, there'll be fencing and secure measures in place to keep the building safe.
Thank you. Well, I, once again, commend especially David for your work in, in initially conceptualizing this, and then, you know, it's a lot easier to adjust from a known, adjust from something than, than to just hand something over to someone to create it. And you all did, internal to our staff, a tremendous amount of heavy lifting to do that. That in turn has saved us boatloads of architectural and conceptualizing dollars that go to other entities, so I want to thank the staff for the time that you put in, and also the, the forward-thinking design in terms of not being hemmed in. All three areas have expansion, you know, capability, and I think that's gonna end up being used as time goes on, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I might say, one of my favorite things about this building is it's gonna be paid for when it's built. There'll be no money borrowed, and, and these folks here have done a great job, you know, they convinced us, what I guess, over a year ago now, that this was the path we need to take, and, and, you know, we actually accumulated this, accumulated this money to pay for this thing over some difficult times, and it's always a team effort. We had our administrative staff, of course, adhere strictly and maintain the integrity of the budget that we had put in place, but I want to congratulate my fellow Commissioners that, for keeping a tight hand on unnecessary spending over the years, whether it was, you know, on our, on our job, if we were out to eat or whatever, folks continually make requests of you, and, and at some time, we all along the way had to tell somebody, whether it was on the subcommittee we sat on, or we, we were out to, for an evening meal, or my case, standing out at the Parks Counter, or Mr. Robison's case, all the way down in Charlotte, telling those folks we couldn't afford everything that we asked for, but a great deal of discipline across the board, and the faithful stewardship of our, of our department heads and, and their employees who, who turned money back in, and we put it back in the general fund and, and the fund balance and able to compensate, so we're all, I congratulate all these folks.
And also want to thank our directors for their ability to shape this whole construct and new operational paradigm, if you will, to be able to qualify for maximum grants that can further assist us in watching the bottom line, so. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Schlevey.
Thank you.
Thank you all. There are no official public hearings scheduled for this evening. Moving on to administrative matters that have been reviewed at our pre-agenda meeting for enclosure on a consent agenda. Mr. Smith, if you'd please summarize those.
Yes, sir. First item is a request from Aridale Statesville Schools for approval of an application for lottery proceeds in the amount of $325,000. A request from the Finance Department for the adoption of a resolution approving Cool Springs Volunteer Fire Department financing with Blue Harbor Bank. Request from the Finance Department for approval and signature on a 36-month renewal subscription to Westlaw Legal Research. A request from Tax Administration to approve the refunds and releases, and a request for approval of the May 3rd, 2016 amendments.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined by County Manager?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Moving on, we do have an announcement of some vac- So, okay, well, thank you, Mr. Levy.
Thank you.
Thank you all. There are no official public hearings scheduled for this evening. Moving on to administrative matters that have been reviewed at our pre-agenda meeting for enclosure on a consent agenda. Mr. Smith, if you'd please summarize those.
Yes, sir. First item is a request from Iredle Stateville Schools for approval of an application for lottery proceeds in the amount of $325,000. A request from the Finance Department for the adoption of a resolution approving Cool Springs Volunteer Fire Department financing with Blue Harbor Bank. Request from the Finance Department for approval and signature on a 36-month renewal subscription to Westlaw Legal Research. A request from Tax Administration to approve the refunds and releases, and a request for approval of the May 3, 2016 amendments.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined by county manager?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, we do have an announcement of some vacancies on various boards and commissions. There will be no action taken this evening concerning these. This is simply so people have an opportunity to apply. If you visit the county website, you can get additional information and an application if you are interested. We have one announcement for the Mooresville Planning Board ETJ. We have three announcements for the Farmland Preservation Advisory Board. We have one announcement for the Personnel Advisory Committee, and three announcements for Region F Aging Advisory Committee. We do have three sets of appointments to boards and commissions. First, we have two appointments to the, excuse me. We have two appointments to the Troutman Board of Adjustment. Helen Byers and Leighton Getzinger have been nominated for reappointment by the Troutman Town Council. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we appoint Helen Byers and Leighton Getzinger to the Troutman Board of Adjustment.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have one appointment to the Board of Health. Two individuals have been considered, both qualified, given just the weight of a resume. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this was a really hard one here because both of these candidates are very well-qualified for the pharmacist position there on the Board of Health. I would like to nominate at this time Ms. Candace Brewer Reeves for this appointment. She, she gave us a lot of information about herself and although both are very well-qualified, we feel like that Ms. Reeves is our pick on this particular one.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles to appoint Candace Brewer Reeves to the Board of Health. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Finally, there's one appointment for a vacancy on the Social Services Board, as it involves myself currently serving on that board. Requested to fill out the balance, or I'm currently serving Cheryl Lucas's term and to occupy a new term. At this time, I will transfer the chairmanship to the Vice Chairman to preside. I hope you give it back to me. (laughing). Are we having any, one who wants to make a motion?
Yes.
What is social?
Temporary, Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
I would like to nominate Chairman Mallory to the Social Services Board.
Okay.
Let me speak with the highest degree of enthusiasm and support of Mr. Robertson's nomination. I think he's done an outstanding job. I don't normally go overboard and bragging on someone for a job like this, but I'm fearful that if he declines, I will be asked to do so. For that reservation, I speak in favor of said nomination.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any vote?
Okay. I'll have it. You have it back.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Norman. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Hearing none. This is a public comment period. Have we had anyone sign up? No one has signed up. Is there anyone that intended to speak but didn't get the opportunity to sign up? If you'll identify yourself, then we will allow you that opportunity. Seeing and hearing none. We'll move on then to new business. Is there any new business to come before the commission? Hearing none. Move on to item 14, County Manager's Report. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to just bring you up to speed on a request that I've received from the town of Mooresville. I think most of you know about this. It's a request to participate in the, how's it phrase, the newly-created Lake Norman Transportation Commission. There are dues that would be associated with this. I think you all are familiar with the organization. It's, it's looking, they're looking to, the town of Mooresville's kind of taking the leadership role in this and looking to change the structure of this board to include Mooresville, Iredle County, Statesville, Troutman, and Davidson. What I propose to do is probably forward this information along to you and then have a formal request at our next meeting, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention since it has been kind of out there in the community. Second item is, I'll give you a brief update about the jail, but just for public consumption. We are at the conclusion of the first phase of the jail design. Again, this is a, between an 18 and 21 million dollar project, and everything is going well so far. The architect has completed the schematic design phase and will be going into design drawings upon their release to move into that phase. Like to thank, I think he's left, but Sheriff Campbell and Major Connolly for their help in working with the architect to get some of this, some of the design and scope issues scaled down somewhat. I think we're in a good place now, and I'm prepared to go ahead and let them move forward based on the information that I got today. So everything's moving pretty smoothly. That's all I have.
Well, I would like to, uh, ditto Commissioner Johnson's remarks about pay-as-you-go plan for the public safety building. They're doing the same thing for the proposed jail. So all those comments are applicable to the jail as well. It's a larger project by a factor of almost two, a little bit more than two possibly. But nonetheless, it is another project which, through prudent saving and watching the bottom line in terms of the deliverables through the design and the build process, that we'll be able to, having for several years saved, we'll be able to culminate with the building of a jail that's paid for without having to raise anyone's taxes.
I agree. There's, there's no substitute for time and discipline.
At this time, consider a motion to go into closed session for item of economic development pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A4. Is there a motion?
Remove.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are.[1094.75]
All right, we resume with our open session. There's nothing to report from our closed session. Anything else for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn?